I'll call to order this special meeting of the Woodbridge Board of Ed at 7:00 PM, August 26, 2020. First, I would just like to remind everyone to mute their microphone to avoid background noise unless you're speaking. And once again this evening, I would like to clarify that the chat function remains turned on. The board members do not continually monitor the chat during the meeting. So that's just a reminder. All right. Item three, WEA letter. Christine, do you have a report for us? You're on mute, Christine.
I know, I couldn't find the place to unmute myself. Thank you. So I know that this evening, the Board of Education plans to discuss the return to campus letter that was sent on August 14. I just wanted to provide the Board of Education that we met with the administrative team, met with the executive board on August 18, and we had a discussion there. We met for around one hour. After that meeting, I received some first questions on August 19 via a phone call, and I provided responses to that via an email on August 20. I clarified some of the concerns that were in the letter in a letter that I sent to all parents and all staff on August 21. We received an email on August 22 stating that the teachers were going to provide us with some questions that they would then hope that we would be able to answer, wanting some of that information prior to the teachers returning on Friday. So we received those questions on Monday afternoon, the 24th, and we provided responses to some of those questions last night on the 25th, and we are still responding to the remaining questions. And we have a meeting scheduled with all the teachers on the third day of the professional learning because we feel that some of the things that are in their questions, as well as in the previous letters and emails, will be addressed and answered through the training that's going to be provided on those days. And so we felt that if we had that meeting at the end of the third day, we could see what questions were still there or what suggestions would be there to modify or change some of the protocols leading up to the start of school, and it would still provide us with three days to get back to the teachers with that additional information. So that's where we are at this point in regard to the letter from August 14.
Thank you, Christine. Mike Strampler, do you have any follow-up questions or comments?
No, not right now. I actually missed part of that. I was having some technical difficulty.
Sorry, Mike.
So I'll pass right now. I may have a comment.
Okay, great. Laura, do you have any questions or comments? You may be on mute because I can't hear you.
I said I would like to ask a question about the -- who was involved in the process for developing the -- maybe the principal can answer that.
Laura, can you repeat your question because I think you broke up?
Sure. I said, who was involved in the process to develop the plan?
Do you want to answer that, Lisa, or?
So I guess I just need clarification. Is Laura asking about the reopening plan or is she asking about the return to campus letter?
The reopening plan, yes.
That's actually item four on the agenda, Laura.
All right, then I'll hold off on it.
Okay, we'll come back to you. Do you have any questions on the return to campus letter?
No, thank you.
Okay. You might be on mute, Megan.
Hi, I don't have any questions based on what Christine just said, no.
Thank you. Dan, any questions on the return to campus?
I have more of a comment than a question.
Sorry, I didn't say comments, but you're allowed.
Yeah. So in reading that letter, there was a CDC, it's on subsection three of it. Here are our main concerns, and it starts off the paragraph with, "The CDC recommends that everyone stay six feet apart, confirmed by Dr. Fauci in the recent press conference with Governor Lamont." The letter chose to cite that sentence in that paragraph. I'd like to continue reading that paragraph to everyone that's on this call because I think that the rest of the paragraph is very important. So it continues on -- hold on, I had it loaded up, and of course, the interwebs are not being my friend at this moment. Give me one second, please. And I do want to read it so that I'm not miscooling anyone. So it does state the six feet, however, this is the line. It shows you it, and then of course it's listed. Continue reading. Okay. Connecticut is a good place, Dr. Fauci says. The numbers that the governor showed really indicate that you are in a situation that you now, in many respects, have the upper hand because you have such a low rate of transmission, that when you do get new cases, you have the capability of containment opposed to mitigation. Continues on to say that you, the state of Connecticut, have maintained certain things that I consider five or six very important things that we need to do to stay ahead of the virus. Universal masking, avoiding infected places, six feet of distance, maintain whether or not you have a mask on or not. While the state is still torn when it comes to the topic of back to school, Dr. Fauci said, "If the numbers are low enough, children should head back to the classroom." Depending on what level you're in, my approach is always, and I will say it whether I'm in Connecticut or any other place, is that the default position should be try. In the entire article, not just a fraction of it. I looked yesterday, and you know, we have a transmission rate of 1.8. The hybrid model kicks in at 10 or less. So we are, you know, five times less than where we should be even considering a hybrid model. So in regards to this letter, I think it's a guidance.
Dan, you broke up a little bit on your last sentence.
That we should be using --
Hard to this law.
Yeah, in regards to the letter, we should be using facts to guide us, and the transmission rates in Connecticut are very low. That's my only comment at this moment.
Thank you, Dan. Joyce, do you have any comments or questions tonight? Item three.
Yes. Okay, so I guess I have a few things. There was a request to start off with distance learning. Now, that position may not be the current position of the teachers, but I was asked to clarify our position on distance learning, and I believe, and I would welcome any board member to correct me if I'm wrong, but just to be clear, that distance learning 100% is not something that is on the table being considered for a couple of reasons. One is that if we are going to be in person at all, now would be the best time, given that transmission rates are low. The second is, we have heard from our community that a large number of families would like their children to go to school, and so we feel the need to meet the needs of our community. And the third reason is, well, it's always good to take a look at what other districts are doing. We would want to look at districts that are more like us. For example, districts that are in our dirk. We are no New Haven. If anything, we would want to be compared to districts that are, that have as many resources, that have as much space indoors and outdoors, that has good HVAC system, et cetera, et cetera. So I was asked to clarify that point, and so that is not on the table right now. And of course, the obvious is that we're not contemplating that everyone 100% has to be back in school. We are giving parents options. So we are in the middle ground area, and that is the hardest place to navigate as all the districts across the state are discovering. It's hard to pull off successfully, and I think all the districts are really struggling with this. The second thing I want to point out is that there were a large number of teachers that had signed this letter, and so the hope is that by the end of the meeting tonight, that we will have addressed most or all of the concerns that these teachers have expressed because with 59 teachers, it's a large percentage, and so this will be an opportunity to really answer those questions. So hopefully, we will achieve our goal tonight.
Thank you, Joyce. Jeff Townsend?
I don't have additional comments beyond those that have been previously made at the moment. I may have more, so.
Thanks, Jeff. David Ross?
I have nothing to add right now. I'm looking forward to hearing Superintendent Siriac tell us more about the plan and hear some actual details.
Jeff Hughes?
No, I just wanted to reiterate what Christine said. She sat down with them and addressed that letter, so I don't think it's the place tonight for the board to address the issues of that letter if our administration has already.
Thanks, Jeff. And so my comments are similar to yours, Jeff Hughes. I'm happy to hear that the administration has met with the WEA leadership and that it's planned to address some of the teacher concerns and review the protocols at the return of school during professional development days for the teachers. So I thank the administration for working on that and having another opportunity once people kind of get into the whole reopening themselves. Thanks to the administration for that. Mike Strampler, are you back? And did you want to make a comment? We might have lost Mike.
I'm back.
Wonderful. Do you have anything that you wanted to add? I didn't want to forget coming back to you.
And not right now.
Thanks. I'm having trouble with my pushing the right button tonight. Sorry.
Lynn, may I add a comment?
Yes, certainly, Laura.
Okay, I just wanted to say that there's a process that these letters, especially from parents and from anyone, from the union, should always go to the administration. And if the administration does not answer the answers, the questions, then they go to the superintendent. And then from the superintendent, if the people that write the letter are not satisfied, the letter would go to the Board of Education. I have 40 years of experience as an administrator, and I feel that the process isn't being followed, and that creates a lot of problems. That's my only comment regarding the letter.
Thank you for that, Laura. I think we're ready to move on unless there's a board comment, or Christine, if you have anything else you want to add, otherwise, we'll move on. Okay, I don't see anything. Item four is the reopening plan update, and I want to start by saying that this plan does not belong to one person. It is a collective work that was created by a collaborative and inclusive group of stakeholders that included the entire administration, numerous teachers, parents, board members, our facilities director, our transportation coordinator, our nursing staff, Quinnipiac Valley Health District, the school's medical advisor, an incredible group of people who put in hours and hours of work. So each of those who participated in those countless hours and that took the time to develop the plan really deserves our appreciation, and so I want to thank you all who took part on doing this work for your efforts in the reopening plan. So Christine, do you have a statement to make at the beginning? Board update?
Yes, I do. I too, I echo what Lynn shared, and I would like to thank the administration, the reopening committee, and the additional teachers and staff of the subgroups who have worked extensively for months on the reopening plan. It has been inclusive of many teachers, all who wanted to could take part, and we are fortunate to have a community of teachers who gave up their time to be part of that planning. The administration has spent countless hours between those meetings working on the plan. They gave up their vacation, they sacrificed their time with their families, and they did that because they know it is in the best interest of the students and the staff, and it is the role that they play as administration to plan. Current state metrics currently indicate low risk in our region, indicating more in-person learning, and is not an indicator of hybrid or remote learning. Our Boa neighbors, Bethany and Orange, are opening on Monday for students in grades K to six to in-person learning, five days like the Woodbridge plan. AMITD for middle school and high school students are hybrid due to the complexities of a middle and high school schedule. They change classes, they have multiple instructors. Hybrid was indicated for moderate risk, something to be prepared for, to transition to, should COVID infection rates begin to rise in our community. The state required all districts to submit a plan that had three components. The plan for Woodbridge was submitted on July 24. A draft plan was presented to the Board of Education on July 15, along with a PowerPoint presentation. July 20, there was an update to the plan, and there were guest speakers present to speak about COVID. On August 8, the final plan was presented. Noted in the plan is the staffing challenge for two programs. The decision was made to begin with and focus on further development of the in-person five-days plan and the remote option plan. A survey was sent out to parents to select either in-person or remote learning. Our students have been divided into groups aligned to AMITD's hybrid model so that should we need to move to hybrid, we are prepared. We will use this breakdown on the first two days of school to start with smaller groups so that we have that opportunity to share our safety protocols in a smaller setting. The student survey results yielded 75% in-person and 25% remote. For in-person learning, the best time to have the students in school engaged in learning process is now, an opportunity to develop rapport and connections with students. I do not want our teachers and students to miss out on one more day of beginning to build that community of learners. We need our students back while data is indicating it is low risk. When schools closed in March, the value added was that teachers knew their students, they knew their students as individuals, and they knew them as learners. In anticipation of the possibility of further closures, either short-term or long-term, it is important to take the beginning of the school year and build that learning community and to prepare our students and parents for what remote learning will look like should we need to close. The Board of Ed has indicated and requested further clarification of the need for additional staff to support the in-person remote learning option and how it will be funded. The remote option will run as a separate program. In-person was designed to have the current six sections at each grade level. The remote option requires eight remote assignments, seven grade levels, K through six, and special education. The decision was made to keep six sections at each grade level inclusive of MAG. Students were grouped based off of teacher discussions and understanding of their students as learners. And as an aside, I just want to share that this level of work, that teachers came in during the summer and spent the time to discuss their students as learners and determine what the best placement was for those students, and then to make adjustments to the curriculum based on what they were able to teach in the spring during that time of remote learning, and then seeing how that's going to impact the current school year, I don't see that. I am in touch with people in other districts, and the fact that you have staff that is that dedicated, that they will take the time to do that in preparation for the next school year is to be commended. You should be proud because this just does not happen across the board. And so that tells me, as a new member of the Woodbridge community, what a wonderful group of individuals this district is made up of. When the remote learners are removed from their assigned classroom, it results in reduced class sizes in each in-person classroom. That coupled with the removal of furniture from the classrooms increased the ability to social distance in the classroom. I recommend that we move forward with the plan, that we continue to clarify for teachers' concerns through professional learning prior to the school year starting. There are two shortened days with half the students, followed by two shortened days with all the students. And we need to take that time at the end of each one of those days and gather feedback from our teachers and staff as to what is working and what needs to be adjusted, and that is our plan and our intention, to see what we need to do to adjust, to make the environment work smoothly and safely. 75% of the parents have indicated that they are sending their students for in-person learning. Funding for the eight positions, I have been working with Al this week. We have costed out the expenses to Thanksgiving for eight teachers, and I can share that at a more detailed level after this portion, if the board so chooses, as it looks like. We need to move forward with hiring for these positions. There is no way to provide adequate social distancing with less sections. You either need additional staff for the smaller class sizes or less students in the building each day. I do not feel that a hybrid model, when current infection rates are at low risk, is fair to our students. A hybrid model will greatly reduce direct instruction. Students will be in school twice a week because we will need to align with AMITD in regard to our transportation. If we do not add staff, then, as I mentioned, we would need to reduce sections, and if we reduce sections, we are not able to social distance, and that is why I am recommending that we stay the course. Administration has not been able to hire. We have interviewed, and we have certified candidates we would like to offer the positions to. However, every day, we are not moving forward. We lose some of them to surrounding districts. We have not been able to provide students and parents with teacher assignments. Administration has been working to provide the best opportunity in the current situation for our students. To be here in the final hours leading up to the start of school, the possible large-scale changes are desired is deflating. Please trust that they are working hard on behalf of the students and staff at Peter Road School. I have experience in other districts, and you have dedicated, knowledgeable administrative staff that all work together collaboratively every day. I have been remarkable, it has been remarkable what I have observed during my short time here in the district. So yes, students and parents had choice. Staff and teachers state that they did not have choice, and I understand that, and it is certainly not because administration lacks empathy for our teachers and our staff, and it is not that we don't feel that their concerns are genuine or valid. One difference is that their job and their responsibility to the students is essential, and we cannot open our schools without teachers. The state has tasked us with reopening. We need to continue forward with what is currently planned and continuously evaluate moving forward what additional supports and adjustments are needed. Yesterday afternoon, we received a hybrid plan from the WEA, and honestly, I didn't even get to see that until probably 7:30, 8 o'clock last night because I was working, preparing for tonight's meeting. It's two days before school starts for teachers, and I just question, why is it that that plan wasn't presented in early July? Teachers were on the reopening committee, and in everything that I've been able to go back and review, the hybrid plan was really not discussed as an option. So I am requesting that the Board of Education trust the administration and myself, and I request that we move forward with the in-person and remote option plan. As I've been preparing for this meeting, I have been inundated with emails from various stakeholders. While I have not had the opportunity as yet to respond to each email, I have read the emails, as have you, and I am aware that the letters support many different viewpoints. It is normal, as we get closer to the reopening, that anxiety will increase. It doesn't mean that a shift of the plan is warranted. So I really hope that I'm able to answer, or my administrative team will be able to answer, questions that the board has so that you feel comfortable with the fact that we are going to move forward with the in-person remote option plan.
I motion that we vote to support the in-person plan, the plan as presented by Superintendent Siriac just now.
Christine, I just want to be clear on this. Since our agenda doesn't have this as an actionable item, do we take a motion?
I reached out to Board Counsel, and you are not able to add a motion if there was not an action. was not action going to be taken to a special meeting.
Okay.
I will also share that the Board didn't approve the plan, at least not that I'm aware of, because the state didn't require that Boards of Education approve the plan. I know some districts gave it a stamp of approval. I don't know that you did here. I didn't see that anywhere. So I don't know that a motion is needed as much as the discussion of the Board tonight to guide you to be in the direction to continue moving forward.
Okay, then, given the fact that the Board Counsel states that we can't vote tonight on new action items, I retract my motion.
I retract mine.
All right, thank you. So we'll move into a discussion by the Board of this item, reopening plan update. Mike Strandler, do you have any questions of the administration or comments to make?
Yeah, thank you, first of all, for that, for all the details provided by Christine on the plan, the history of the plan, the development of the plan, and some more details of the plan as it stands right now. One, one of the questions and concerns I've always had was whether we actually have the capacity as a school to provide 100% in-person instruction as the plan has communicated to the community. And so we have the capacity to do that in a way that's safe. And so that's what we've communicated as far, that's what's in the plan. I know that currently, we don't have 100% of families who have said that they're coming back, but I'm, but I would like to hear a little bit more about our capacity and what the plan is if that were to, if we, if those numbers were to increase. Is it actually possible for us to educate more families beyond the 70 or so percent that we're currently planning to educate in person? And this is just related to, it's just sort of another question I have is, is that, you know, do we need to consider if we don't have that capacity, a clear number for the number, that's like a cap, a maximum number of students that would be able to educate in person? So those are two related questions, what our capacity is and whether we would need to consider some kind of cap with that capacity, considering that level of capacity we have.
So I believe that there is the ability to transition in both directions. So if a student is currently in remote learning, and they make a decision as, you know, the parent and the child, that they want to return to in-person learning, there is the room for them to go into the classrooms. And if the opposite were to occur, then if they wanted to move into remote, the thing that we need to monitor very closely and continuously will be if those numbers swing substantially in one direction or another, then at that point in time, there may be the need to increase and add a remote section and decrease on the other side. And the same, the opposite as well, Mike, is that we will need to then, initially, we can take a couple here, a couple there, whatever, but we need to monitor constantly and make sure that we then make adjustments so we continue to follow our safety protocols. So I do feel that it's flexible, and we need to monitor that. Shame on us if we don't monitor that. That's what our job is. My concern about setting a cap or a number is I feel it's extremely important to always give parents choice in this particular situation. And if we cap at a particular number, even if we capped at what it is right now, if a parent then makes a decision based on what's happening in their life at that particular time, I would not want to have to say to that parent, "I am sorry, but there's no room in remote learning, so I cannot place your child there." And I would not want to say to another parent who is now feeling more comfortable, the infection rates haven't increased, they see that things are going well at the school, and they've decided they want to have their child leave remote learning and come into the building. So my concern of setting a number would be that we're limiting parent choice. So it's up to us as administration to constantly monitor what's happening with the ins and outs and adjust our schedule accordingly. I think it's important to understand that while we have a plan right now, that plan needs to be monitored, and we need to make changes and adjustments to it as needed. I hope I answered your question.
Yeah, I think you partially did. Thank you for that. And just to be clear, what I was referring to was the in-person instruction, not the remote instruction. I understand that we, we have to have the capacity to go to 100% for remote instruction in the event that, you know, incident, the incident rate increases and we need to shut down the school. I think we have to have the capacity to go to 100%, and I think we do have that capacity. And I also agree with what you said about providing families choice. I think we need to provide families choice. I'm completely in favor of having in-person instruction available to families. I think that that's really important. But I think that what we're also trying to do is to balance choice with safety here, and I think that that's also, I think that, that's a critical piece to the decision-making regarding this plan as well. And so while I value choice, I want to make sure that we, if we're telling families, if we're telling the community that we can accommodate 100% of the community, I want to make sure that we're actually able to do that in a way that's safe. And if we're not able to do so, then, you know, we may have to make, at least from my perspective, some kind of adjustment or compromise to this expectation. And so I guess that's what my question was mostly about, was this, you know, the in-person, on-the-ground expectation around 100% in-person instruction? Do we really have the capacity to do that? And if not, what is our level of capacity for safely educating the kids in person at the school?
So I would just respond with the fact that, as I said, we need to monitor constantly to see if we will need to add additional sections in the in-person model as well, should the numbers warrant that. It is not our expectation, while we are still in a situation where we need to provide social distancing and other risk mitigation factors, that we would bring our class sizes back up to full capacity.
So one other question, and that has to do with transitioning between distance learning and in-person. What is the process and how much time must parents give the administration to make this transition between distance and in-person instruction? What's the process look like for families?
Lisa may be able to talk more about the process itself. However, my understanding is the time is that we would ask parents to give us one week so that assignments can be made. But Lisa, I don't know if you want to share further.
Yes, that's correct. We are asking for one week's notice. We are asking that you contact the North Office, the Secretaries, and myself and Ms. Merrill to let us know if you are coming back in or if you are choosing to leave. And if you are coming back in, we are asking for one week to, as Christine mentioned, to make sure that we are prepared to receive the child. We would like the remote teacher to talk with the receiving in-person teacher, and we would like to have the opportunity to just get ourselves ready to welcome your child. So we just ask for a five-day window.
May I ask, may I ask a question, Lisa?
Just want to check and see if Mike's all set.
Yeah, I'm good for now, thank you.
Okay, yes, Laura, you're next on my list, actually.
Okay, so we have three plans. You've developed three plans, am I correct to say that? Yes, okay. So how difficult is it to transition from all-in to the hybrid and to the distance learning?
So the transition will be to the hybrid, it's about the instructional time. So the parents are informed and aware of how the alphabet is being distributed and on which days of the week then their children would attend. So it wouldn't take long to actually move to hybrid if that's what we needed to do. But the piece that we need the time to work on as well with the remote, Laura, because we could also move directly to remote, is that while we have our students in full, we want to provide that opportunity for both teachers to receive additional professional learning in regard to what does the hybrid look like, what is all remote going to look like, what changes are we making from last spring, how can we strengthen that model, as well as having the opportunity for our teachers to share with their students, if we need to move to all remote, this is what it will look like. So they're going to set up their Google Classrooms, they're going to set everything up so that the students and parents are aware. So we will be able to transition to those models in a quick manner. I do state that the longer we're able to stay in in-person before that happens, then the more comfortable we will feel that those different protocols or directions will have been shared with the students and the families so that they also understand what that's going to look like.
And I do realize how important it is for students to meet their teachers and to make that bond and that connection. And once that happens, then it would be easy also, or easier, to transition into the hybrid or to the remote. The other thing that I was concerned about is, oh, I just lost my train of thought. The other thing that I was concerned about was the, it'll come back to me, I'm sorry. I just lost my train of thought.
We can come back to you, Laura, okay? Megan? Megan, you might be on mute.
Yeah, sorry, wasn't, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Hello, okay. It was not letting me unmute. Thank you, Christine, for that summary, much appreciated. And I know a lot of, a lot of work has gone into this plan from so many different people over, over a good amount of time. I appreciate actually what Mike had already said. I think it is super important to make sure that we're balancing choice and safety, and I do have very similar concerns to what he voiced. I think you may have already answered one of the questions I had, but I guess Lisa had mentioned that parents should contact the North Office or whatnot, but is there any intention on having another survey to just kind of reassess where parents are, or are we just kind of going with those numbers and parents should connect with administration if they want to change what they already responded?
Currently, our plan is to go with the numbers that we currently have, but certainly parents can reach out to Lisa's office should they want to make a change.
Okay, and you answered the question I had had about distance learning, that I was concerned we don't have enough distance learning teachers. And it sounds like you guys are willing to shift teachers as necessary if those numbers of parents change. So if you hear from a, you know, a good enough number of parents are wanting to change to distance learning, then you will adjust accordingly. That's, I believe, what I heard.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I had another thought as well, but I think, I guess, one, one thing I wanted to mention, and I acknowledge, I guess, was I also did get a chance to look at the WEA's plan, and clearly a lot of time and energy had been put into that as well. And it's got some, some good points to it, but I am definitely concerned about it being such a dramatic departure from the current plan. I guess I was looking, I was under the impression that there would be suggestions for strategies, but I was envisioning that it would be based off the current plan. So I do feel like shifting to a totally different plan in this moment would be challenging, and I would like to support our administration and our teachers to move forward as fast as possible collaboratively with the current plan. I think our, you know, our teachers are supposed to start tomorrow, our new teachers, I believe, are supposed to start tomorrow. Our amazing teachers from the past will start the next day, I believe. And the current plan has built in what, six days of PD that covers a lot of ground. There's time to learn together, to grow together, to reflect on ideas and concerns together, and discuss possible adjustments together. And it's, I feel like admin is really trying to be open to working with teachers. And I think that's super important, to have that collaboration. And I think at this point, the best way to move forward is to just start moving forward one step at a time. And I do believe that that's possible.
Thank you.
Anything else, Megan?
Um, that's it for now.
Okay, Laura, did you?
My senior moment went away.
Did it jump back in?
It came back. Okay, basically, what I'd like to know, we have six days of professional development, and Friday, the teachers go back, is that correct? Okay, so that's correct. So can you tell me what the professional development days will look like? What, what will you be covering on those professional development days?
Yes, so that schedule has been created, and Lisa is prepared to get that information out, and I believe she could respond to that right now.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely. We actually met, the Professional Development Evaluation Committee met this summer, very graciously came in and spent a lot of time talking about teacher needs. We looked very closely at the WEA survey results about what teachers identified as needs that they had moving forward. And we also had a subcommittee from the reopening committee that was talking a lot about professional learning and teacher needs. So all of that information together, and the PD plan includes a lot of time for classroom setup because our teachers expressed very clearly that they would need time in their spaces, making their classrooms look a little bit different, making sure that they have desks maximized with social distancing, and making sure that they're set up and ready to go to welcome students. We also are providing them with technology professional development. That came through loud and clear in the WEA survey, that teachers really wanted some more technology professional development, so that is happening. We are doing training on PPE and protocols with our nursing staff, and we are also offering a, we're having an outside speaker come in and talk about trauma-informed instruction and really spending a lot of time focusing on our responsive classroom model to support our, the social emotional needs of our students. I think, I think that's everything, actually. I think I just covered it all. So that, that is all of our PD days filled up. And, oh, I'm sorry, one more thing. We are also giving teachers, as always, we always give teachers opportunities for summer curriculum work shareout because summer curriculum work did happen this summer, and we give our grade-level teams the opportunity to share that work and do some curriculum planning for the start of the school year, and we always give teachers the opportunity
And we always give teachers the opportunities to have vertical conversations with the grade levels above and below. And that's an opportunity to talk through students and to sort of share information or share anything that the incoming teacher needs to know about a child. So that is built into our schedule pretty much every year. So those are the other two pieces that are built in, in addition to everything else I mentioned.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Anything else, Laura? Nope. Thank you. Dan? Alan?
At this time, I actually don't have anything other than a comment. I really want to appreciate all the questions that have been raised and all the information that's been provided. It's definitely aiding me in coming to a decision. And that decision is that I support this, you know, moving forward. And I want to thank everyone again for their hard work.
Thank you, Dan. Joyce?
I have three questions. One, the first is just piggybacking off of Megan's question about repolishing. I don't know if we need to repol, but I wonder if it would make sense to just reach out one more time to parents in the event that they want to change their mind to do it by such-and-such date, which is a very short timeframe, only so that we could plan with more specificity? Because I've heard that parents have said, oh, you know, if I had known such-and-such, I would make a different decision. And so I think it might be easier on the front end to make those changes rather than start and then have to make changes thereafter. So that would be my first question, is whether, you know, it would make sense to reach out to parents now in case they want to make any changes? Do you want me to, do you want me to continue? Or do you want to answer that question first?
I'll answer that question first. I think we absolutely, as we'll be sending many things out to our parents in the coming days, we could certainly include that if they needed to make a change that they, they should let us know right away if that's what they were interested in doing. So I, I don't think that that is really going to be problematic, Joyce. However, the, the piece that I would like to add there is if there was one particular thing that then made a parent make that switch from either one direction or the other, I would hope that they would first reach out and have a conversation with us to see if we could help them with whatever that question was and, and help them with that. And if not, then certainly, if they wanted to make that switch, we would absolutely honor that. But possibly, it's something that we could help them with.
Okay. Thank you. The second question I have is with respect to the number of students that would be in both the in-person classrooms as well as in the remote classrooms. So I was wondering, what, what are the numbers looking like?
So currently, in our in-person classrooms, we are, depending on the number of students who asked for remote, obviously, and the number of students in a particular grade level, a few of the grade levels have more students in them than the other grade levels. But the class size range varies from, in some classrooms, in the lower grades, between 12 and 14 students. And then in some of the upper grades, I'd say between maybe 14 to 17 students. In some cases, 16 students. So some classes might have, you know, 15, and another classroom might have 14. So it, it balances there. In the case of the remote assignments, they range from anywhere from around 23 to 34 students, depending on the grade level. And what we have provided there for the remote teachers is that we will, for, for the larger-sized groups, we will be providing them with some teacher assistants so that they will have a teacher assistant working with them as well. So that if they divide their group of remote students into two smaller groups when they're doing their live instruction, the teaching assistant would be able to assist the students who are not then in front of the live instruction with additional work and assignments, et cetera. So we plan to provide them with that additional support.
Yeah, I, I guess I'm a little bit, oh, I, I guess I would ask the question about workload and whether that would be viewed as reasonable for, for a teacher. I just remember in the spring that the teachers felt overwhelmed. Now, you know, distance learning was new. But when I hear the number 34, I understand, you know, a TA might be offered, but it's not quite the same as having a teacher for a certain number of students. And usually, we think about 20 roughly is the ratio that people are used to. So I would just kind of put that out there for people to think about and react to. The third question I have is about the financial implications of the plan. So I would like to hear a bit more about.
Okay. So what we did was we, we are looking for those eight temporary certified substitute teachers. And what we did was we costed out what that would look like till Thanksgiving. And I think I shared with the board that the reason why I'm choosing Thanksgiving for right now is because that gives us time to have further conversations with the town if we think that we are going to be overextending the Board of Education budget. And certainly, it was not something or conversations that were going to be able to be had prior to the start of school year. So by costing that out to Thanksgiving, it gives us September and October to begin to have those conversations. Another reason why I only costed it out right now till Thanksgiving is because that is a date that has been kind of thrown out there as a possibility of, you know, let's take a look at, as winter approaches, are we going to have to switch our model because of increased infections? We don't know the answer to that. So that many months in, Joyce, I also think that we might need to look at the plan to see whether or not we're still in a position to stay in-person with the remote option? Or are we now at a position where we need to move to one of the other plans? So it gives us time to look for additional money as well as the fact that it provides us a time to look to see whether or not the plan as designed is working and whether we need to make adjustments. So costing that out for those eight individuals until Thanksgiving would cost $137,000. So with the help of Al Pullo, he and I have been putting our heads together for the past several days, trying to see how we could offset that $137,000. And one of the things that we took a look at was, many times, as you transition from one school year to another and you have changes in staff, you have ins and outs, you have people who retire, you bring in new hires. Some of them are brought in at a higher salary, some of them are brought in at a lower salary. We had a couple of teachers who were taking a leave. The teachers who were coming in are not as on high of a step as those teachers were. So when Al and I looked at those different ins and outs, we feel that we are going to be to the positive in the Board of Education budget at around $69,000. So that brings that $137,000 to right around $68,000. So we continue to look further. And one of the things that we've reached out to the town, which I know that the Board of Education also did in the spring, is because the SRO was not utilized during the summer months because you didn't run the summer program, there will be a credit for that position. And we also looked at supplies, instructional supplies. And because of what we feel will be more use of technology and iPads and less use of some of the paper and stuff, we've made a modest reduction in the instructional, well, we haven't actually made that reduction. I'm just saying we've done it for the purposes of trying to present to the Board of Education how we could offset that money. But we were looking at a reduction in supplies of 12%. And that would generate an additional $29,000, those two things combined, the SRO summer credit as well as the reduction in the supplies line item. And that would bring the cost from the $137,000 down to approximately $38,000, $39,000. In addition to that, Joyce, we are still getting clarification from the state funds that they will be giving to districts in regard to expenses. The bad news that I have to share is that the monies that they were providing to districts for additional staffing, we did not meet the criteria for in Woodbridge. It, it was only provided to those districts who were at 40% or higher in reduced lunch. However, there are some funds in other pockets for different things, whether it be supplies or whether it be for transportation, et cetera, that the state has indicated that they are going to send us information on, but that we would be able to utilize that money for staffing and such, should we need to, as opposed to the pockets that they place that money in. So Al can speak to this if I get this wrong, because I think we received an adjustment today. Originally, we were looking that we were going to get around $88,000 from that money. But now I think that's been decreased by around $15,000. And so, however, we'd still be looking at potentially getting, you know, $60-plus thousand. So while I, in working with Al, was able to get it down to, you know, the $38,000, $39,000, there is still that other money that will be coming in. So right now, that is what we are looking at, at trying to at least offset those initial months so that the board has the opportunity to have a conversation with the town about the fact that based on what's happening with how schools have to reopen for COVID, that we may need additional monies? And how can we strategize together to find those funds? I hope that somewhat answers your question.
And are there ways that we could staff by reassigning former classroom teachers so as to avoid spending for these new hires?
So I'm not certain what you mean by former teachers.
So we have specialists and coordinators who have been classroom teachers in the past. And so I think it was you who had mentioned Plan B, right? And reassigning these teachers so that we do not have a potential shortfall in our budget? Because some, it seems like we are hoping for some of these funds to come through, but it's not guaranteed.
Well, the money from the, the state is guaranteed. It's just, we're waiting for the clarification on how we can realign that money. But basically, what was shared was that we would have the ability that we could spend it in the other areas. They were trying to be considerate of the districts that did not receive any money in the area of extra staffing, knowing that almost every district at this point is requiring additional staffing. In regard to assigning other teachers, we're not able to fully staff by going through the hiring process between now and the start of school. There certainly is the possibility that some of those teachers will need to step into a classroom until we're able to make that hire. I would be very, very cautious to pull away all our intervention supports at this particular point in time unless we got to a point, Joyce, where we were really in a bind and that's what we needed to do. Because I feel that our students returning to us this year have never needed intervention more than ever before, I guess. I, I lost my train of talking. But because of the fact that the school was in a remote setting for several months, I think that we really need the, be able to provide those interventions to our students and head around running. So I'd like to avoid that if that is possible. So I'd like to knock the Plan B if we don't need.
So can you, can you walk me through the process for how we would go about, let's say, post-Thanksgiving, we still need these teachers? What is the process for how we would go about finding the funds, getting the approvals necessary? What steps would we need to take?
Well, based on what some conversation or emails or whatever that I had heard last week is that we really need to go forward and have a conversation between, you know, our finance committee and the finance committee or the, the Board of Finance at the town level and have a conversation about the situation that we find ourselves in. Is there something that we can do? And just have that conversation. And I, I just want to preface, that's why there's this lead-in time of till Thanksgiving, because I don't feel it's a conversation that we're going to be able to have quickly. I think we need time, and time is of the essence. So we would hope we'd be able to begin those conversations within the week of school opening and start having that dialogue.
Okay, I, I guess I'm a little bit confused because, let's say, we go down this road and then in November, we have to have these conversations. And, you know, what if the finance committee decides that we're not going to be able to do this? Then that's a little bit awkward because we have these teachers on board, but then we don't have the approvals to go forward. I don't know, I, I'm just, I feel, I'm just a little confused about how it would all work.
Christine, may I add a little bit of legacy to that? So just first and foremost, those conversations have already begun and are ongoing. Superintendent Gilbert had continued what was in place under Superintendent Stella in that we meet as close to monthly as possible, but certainly on a regular basis with the Town Finance Director and the First Selectman. Mr. Giglietti has attended when his schedule allows. But most certainly, with the current year and the unknown consequences of the pandemic, we have begun those conversations. And while naturally, no commitments have been afforded by the town because it's really too early, it's too early to know what the amount of the need will be. But we certainly have presented that there will very likely be a need. The strategy remains the same. We always look to offset losses within our operating budget. So as Christine alluded to earlier, you know, the, the informal holdback, not quite a spending freeze yet, but an informal holdback of our supplies. First and foremost, teachers shouldn't be spending for the entire year because we don't know what that entire year is going to look like. But certainly should be getting their supplies in for the upcoming months so that we could start off the school year in the models afforded. But again, as the months play through and as the variables play through, the discussions are ongoing. The important thing is they have begun. And as we're better able to quantify our positions, we certainly share that updated information with our town partners. It's, it's been a two-way discussion in the past. And I, I don't see any reason why that would not continue going forward. I don't know if that helped ease your concern, Joyce?
I think what you're saying, Al, is that the town is fully aware of the need to hire the additional teachers.
No, not, well, at the last conversation, we didn't have a number of staff. We didn't know what the needs were. We knew that, you know, we're, we're facing a pandemic. We're facing a, a hybrid model. We're facing business quite different than we usually have. So we anticipate having unbudgeted costs because PPE certainly wasn't an element in our budget last December, but it's a reality in our budget now. So those discussions have happened. The, they have not been quantified. So we have not said, we'll need X temporary staff, we'll need X in PPE costs. We have, because that information- We have, because that information is not known. Again, Christine was just talking about a state funding that literally today, we found out that we were going to get a reduction, almost 24% of what we initially thought we were going to get. So there's a lot of moving pieces, and as is expected, there are a lot of unknowns to mitigate this pandemic, but be assured that conversations have begun and most certainly they will continue under Christine's term during, with the district and certainly when a permanent superintendent. I don't see any reasons why those discussions would not continue.
Yeah, I guess I remain a little bit confused about the process because it seems like we have made decisions and are about to spend money, but then haven't really had the conversations yet because we can so far afford right now, we think, but then come a few more months that pass, we then would need approval. I don't know. I just, I'm a little confused, sorry.
But, but we're not really doing anything different than we've done in the past. The informal agreement has always been manage your budget, mitigate your budget, and if at the end of the day you are not able to mitigate all of your losses, then bring those needs to us. But first and foremost, it's always been a clear understanding, don't bring those needs to us as a surprise in May, keep us informed ongoing throughout the year. And that's, that's very much the strategy and the discussion that's in place current day. At our last meetings, Joyce, we did not have a staffing, we did not know what impact of staffing replacements or coverage we were looking at. So it was impossible and honestly unfair to even put an amount out there in our last conversation with the town officials because it was largely unknown.
And if I could just jump and feedback on that, Al, I think, Joyce, historically, we've always been in this position. There've been situations where in the middle of the year, we've had to add a teacher, you know, going back 40 years, I can remember, where we added two teachers after the start of the school year that weren't originally in the budget, but with the moving around and of funds and a little bit of savings here and whatever, it's oftentimes covered. But we've done that with non-certified staff and certified staff in the past. So I don't, you know, this is certainly a very extreme situation of having to do it, but this is not something that's unusual necessarily for the school district. Am I correct about that, Al?
Absolutely, Lynn. And in recent years, I remember hiring a teacher, a full-time teacher, maybe a little less than two weeks before school started. And again, the year played through, the discussion stayed. Don't forget, we always have variables. We could have a favorable heating season and have some fallout there to be able to throw some surplus monies to an anticipated deficit. Same case for whether it be a teacher, whether it be a non-certified staff positions. It really ties back to the words Christine said earlier about our learning models applies to our budget. It's continual monitoring, and it truly is sometimes a day-by-day material change. Today's decrease in anticipated funding from the state is a prime example of that.
Yeah, I guess I would agree with Lynn that eight is extreme. We're dealing with an extreme situation. As long as you are comfortable, Al, with the town being fully up to speed and not surprised or dismayed by the situation, I will, I will defer to you.
Thank you. I don't know that they won't be dismayed by the situation. I think the outcome is going to disappoint us all, but we certainly will keep those conversations current, fluid, and ongoing.
And we thank you for that, Al. Are you all set?
Yes.
Okay, Jeff Townsend?
Yeah, I guess I just wanted, first of all, comment that I really appreciate the hard work that's gone on by so many people in the context of this. First, let me just say that for the parents and families or community, I think it's really essential that we do serve the community to the best of our ability to serve everyone in, with the options that they feel are going to be best for, for themselves in this time because we're at, you know, this is a pandemic of, that we haven't seen in 100 years, something like this. So it's something that is an untested experience for us all, and that makes it a lot more work for the administration, I mean, crazy amounts more for the administration to try to keep our ship in, heading in the right direction. It makes a really, really daunting prospect for the teachers so that the teachers are in a position where they feel extremely put upon to try to do everything. They're, I mean, they're the first line for doing everything here. So this situation is unprecedented and unprecedentedly difficult. So I just want to ask everyone to try their very best to understand where everyone else is coming from in this situation, especially, I want the families to know that they should be served in terms of their interests, and I think the administration and the teachers are trying to do their very best at doing that. And I want the teachers and the admin, and I want all of the families to understand that the teachers and administration are under a tremendous amount of pressure to try to make this work. So just starting with that comment, I do have a few questions with regard to the situation that we're in with regard to the plan that has been put forward for this. First of all, I am, I just, this is a little bit of a follow-up maybe on some of Joyce's questions. I just want to fully understand the timeline here, and Al, thank you so much for laying out like why this is such a fluid thing that needs to be dealt with. But following on the comment that both Lynn and Joyce said, that this is a pretty extreme change to have to make at the, you know, at a very close point to the point of starting school, and we have an extreme staffing shortage under the plan that we're going with here. And I'm just wondering, was there, you know, can we speak to, was some, that happened the basis of the plan that was being put forward, or was that completely not anticipatable?
I apologize because I wasn't really able to hear your question. Would you mind repeating it one more time?
Did you hear the, did you hear, which part? Just the question?
Just the question.
The question. Is there, was there no paid extent of, of the challenge in hiring at this point? Obviously, we're at a very, very late point for hiring a large number of teachers. This was commented on in the previous questioning. And unfortunately, of course, it has consequences for who we can hire and it has consequences for the classroom education that is received. So I'm just trying to understand that timeline. As was mentioned, there was a mention of a staffing challenge on August 8th that I'm not sure if there was much detail to that, but in struggling with the staffing challenges, I'm just wondering whether there was any way to anticipate this a little earlier.
So I'll share, Jeff, that since I've been here, we have been in the process of posting for those positions and setting up interviews for those positions, et cetera. However, based on a conversation with the board and not being aware of the additional positions, we have held off on actually offering those positions to the people that we have interviewed for those positions. Because when it was, sorry?
Since last Thursday that you were talking about?
Um, I don't know, but yeah, so we were in a position, we're set, as I said, we've interviewed, we know who the people are, who we would like to offer the positions to. We have lost a few of them to other districts. I can't speak to prior to that. I think the other piece that was happening, Jeff, was waiting for the results from the survey to have a better understanding of how many sections we would then need for that remote learning component. So those were the two factors, I think, that have kind of delayed the process, but we are ready to move tomorrow. Tonight, maybe we'll call a few people.
That, thank you for explaining that, those, the situations that seem to have put us in that position. I think that the, the other question I want to ask is about hiring those positions. They're temporary positions till November, is that correct? And I was maybe a little surprised at, in fact, how, well, I guess what I want to ask is, those temporary positions, are those individuals going to be hired with or without, for instance, benefits for healthcare?
So maybe Al could speak to this further if I don't get it completely correct. However, as we've interviewed the candidates, we have shared with them that this is a long-term substitute position, that it is going to run until Thanksgiving with the possibility of it being for the full year. So all the individuals know coming in that it is till Thanksgiving with the possibility to go beyond that. Currently, in that position, they are paid on the first step, and it is without benefits. I lost Jeff.
Yeah, oh, he's back.
He's back.
We're okay?
Did you hear?
Did you hear the answer, Jeff?
Yes, I heard the answer. Fine, thank you.
Al, do you have anything that you feel needs to be added?
The only thing I'd like to clarify is just to keep consistent terminology with contract. It is not a long-term substitute. A long-term is, is one that is in the position, the full academic year. So Christine, everything else Christine said is on target. It's a short-term durational position and one that does not, that does not get afforded benefits.
I will get up to speed on the terminology.
Not a problem.
Okay, so I guess my fault, I'm like, you know, I feel a lot of responsibility for our teachers and the condition that they are in terms of they're going to be facing, working in a, in a first-line position, which of course, many people who are essential workers are faced with. And I'm concerned both for the teachers that we have hired now and also the teachers we're bringing in. So we're bringing in eight new teachers from other communities, and just as a one consequence to the plan is that they're being brought in without healthcare. Are they, like, for instance, if they get sick, are we going to pay for their costs or how is that going to be handled?
So these positions are no different than any other temporary, short-term, or part-time, under 30-hour-a-week position. It's in compliance with federal and state labor laws that these individuals do not typically. And in my experience and observation, certainly in Woodbridge, most of these, most individuals that are applying for non-permanent, non-full-time positions have benefits either through a spouse or, or civil partner, some other support structure that would afford the benefits, and that's why they know it going in. Some, some people like the short-term duration, keeps them professionally, you know, connected and then, but they're not there long-term to have to worry about any of the quote-unquote baggage that might come with permanent positions. And, and then just one last thing to your, so as far as your question about health, so naturally, whether a permanent or a temporary employee, any injury on the job would be subject to recovery once approved as a worker's compensation claim. So there is some coverage in that respect for work-related injury that is approved as a worker's comp claim.
I just hope that there is no, the right word is hard to find here, but disincentive for anyone coming in to monitor their health properly for fear of having, you know, to pay for such a thing or fear of it being a problem for their short-term contract or anything like that. I think it's very important that we make it clear that the health of the community is essential.
I think we lost Lynn. Joyce, are you able to move on to the next board member to?
Yes, so it's Dave Floss.
Cool, thanks. So I would largely echo the comments that everybody else has already made, especially many thanks to all of the hard work from everybody that's been involved, from teachers and everybody serving on the committees and the administration. And I know that there's been an enormous amount of work that's gone into this process. Thank you. I want to clarify because I realize there's been a lot of negative affect in these meetings that, at least from my perspective, this has been, these have been issues of process and not necessarily of content. So the concerns that I've had have been around transparency of what's happening, not necessarily what is actually happening, but that we haven't known about it. And it's been very hard for us to be able to feel like we can make informed decisions or have informed conversations without all the data. So I think this last conversation, I really appreciate Christine, you're being very forthright with us and sharing all these data. You know, until the end of last week, we hadn't heard that there were eight new teachers that were going to be hired as part of this plan. So it seems to me quite likely that, that that process had been going on for some time before that, but we didn't know anything about it. And so, so I have questions, and I want to be clear that the questions are intended because there are many families who are trying to make decisions about what's right for them and what's right for their kids, as the board were trying to understand the entire process. And so by asking questions, I, I just want to understand, I know that you all have been working really hard and that there are answers to these, but we haven't necessarily heard all of them. So I am curious still to understand fully the staffing implications of what's happened. So I don't personally understand the math for how many teachers we used to have doing X jobs in the full-time, in-person model that we've had. How many teachers are unable to work for whatever reason or will not be returning for whatever reason? How many teachers still are filling those roles? And then how many are assigned to remote learning? Because I just, I haven't been able to understand those numbers, and I'm hoping you can help me with this.
So in regard to grade levels, there were, pre-plan, six instructional teachers at each grade level. And the plan currently requires that we maintain six teachers at each grade level. And then we have the addition of needing one additional teacher for remote learning at each grade level plus special education. So that's where the number of eight additional staff are needed. In addition to that, we currently have nine teachers who have been assigned to do in-person, I'm sorry, to do the remote learning. So the individuals who are assigned to do the remote learning are based off of, are the American Disabilities Act or different things where we were not able to make the accommodations within the in-person setting, and therefore, we were able to provide them with an opportunity for remote learning. I don't think I answered everything, so if you could cycle back to what other data you were looking for there?
I think that's most of it, but, but my understanding was that there was, so you mentioned 42 classroom positions plus eight being created for remote, for the grade levels? I think that's what you said, if my math was right. And is there any change to the number of teachers in all of the other roles that they had been in before? Are there changes there to accommodate?
I do not believe so, but I will defer to Lisa if she's aware of a change that was made that I'm not aware of because I wasn't here for last year. Lisa?
Sorry, do you mean like are we asking a teacher who is currently an interventionist to then become a classroom teacher? Is that your question?
No, I'm really just confused, Lisa. I just don't understand. I thought we had about 77 teachers. Is, is that the ballpark? No, I'm really just confused, Lisa. I just don't understand. I thought we had about seventy-seven teachers. Is, is that the ballpark?
Right, so Christine is just talking about, um, grade-level classroom teachers. She's not talking about, um, all of the other special area teachers necessarily and, you know, all of the other certified staff. So she's just talking about grade-level classroom teachers right now. And what she is sharing with you is that, um, in our grade-level classrooms, we have, um, five to six sections at every single grade level. And we are maintaining that number of sections while also granting, um, one remote teacher per grade level.
Right, but I, I thought that the number was somewhere upwards of twenty of individuals who for whatever reasons were incapable of, weren't going to be able to be in a classroom for in-person teaching and learning. So, so I'm trying to understand how we get from seventy-seven minus twenty plus to eight. And realistically, it's seventy-seven plus eight additional, so it's eighty-five, but with fewer people. So that, that's, that's where I'm just, and, and this is really, I just want to understand how we're thinking about how do we approach the, the full-time? I completely agree with everything everybody else has already said of, we have families who have diverse needs and we need to be able to meet the needs of, of our community to the best of our ability. So, so I'm all for figuring out how do we do this? I just want to understand the thought process and the rationale of how we've been trying to balance this. And with the spoiler that my next questions are going to be trying to understand the remote learning and, and how we're optimizing that.
Christine, do you want me to answer the question about the twenty versus what it actually is?
Yes.
Okay, um, so, um, I think that WEA, maybe you're getting that W, that number twenty from a WEA survey perhaps, but I, I'm not sure where that number's coming from. But, um, but what happened was that, um, we were not, not every single request
Okay.
was granted for various reasons and in consultation with various people. Um, so we were following, um, ADA guidelines, contract guidelines, FMLA guidelines. We were following all of our guidelines and granting the requests that we could grant, which was not all of them.
Okay, and so that number ended up being much smaller of the, of the number of requests that was actually granted at the end of the day?
Yeah.
Okay, that, that's a big part of the math that I, I just haven't been able to make sense of.
Right.
Okay, um, so I guess my next question is, is trying to, to get a grasp on, um, again, the balance between these two things, recognizing this is a really difficult job, I get it. Um, in the spring, I know everybody was working their hardest to, to accomplish something that was impossible. The, the data that we got back from families was that about a third of families were really happy with how remote learning went. A third were okay with it and a third were really not terribly happy with how it went for their personal family. Um, and so given that we do have a significant proportion of students who are going to be engaging with the remote plan, I'm curious, how are we thinking about remote learning both immediately as part of the full reopening plan with a remote option versus if and when we end up needing to transition to something else? What, what are the steps that we're taking to ensure that we are optimizing that experience?
Um, I have asked Lisa to respond to this.
Um, so, so first of all, I have to preface everything I'm about to say by letting you all know that I have not met with the remote teach, the teachers who are assigned to remote teaching yet because they don't technically report back until Friday. So I want, I just want that understanding out there. And I know people are very anxious for information and for, um, to receive contact from their remote learning teachers, but contractually, teachers report back Friday. And I have not had that opportunity yet to meet and to discuss and to share and to plan with them. Um, so I just want to start by saying that. Um, so a lot of what we shared when we did the remote learning presentation earlier, that was August, I think, was that August, whenever that was, at one of the board meetings? And we shared all that information about the remote learning plan. A lot of what we shared with you is how it will look for our remote students, starting at the beginning of the year. What will most likely be different is the, um, number of recorded lessons because the recorded lessons, if, if you recall, we had talked about how teachers would most likely use recorded lessons because those would be able to be accessed at any time. If a child is unable to attend the math lesson at a certain hour, they could watch it later. Um, and, and the recorded lessons would also allow the teachers the opportunity to meet with students, in-person, virtually in-person, in small groups and in one-on-one settings. So there would be more opportunities to support students' learning, um, at their, at their level and, and address their needs and encourage enrichment where needed. Um, so that was the proposed schedule that we had put forth should we move to full remote learning. Um, starting the year, that will, that schedule will look a little bit differently um, because asking a teacher to record that many lessons, um, for all of the content areas would require a tremendous amount of time. And that is something I think, you know, we can all acknowledge. So that schedule would look different than what we pitched at the beginning of our presentation in August. So there will be an expectation though, because a lot of the feedback that we heard from parents was that there would, there should be more live teaching. So there is going to be an expectation for more live teaching from our remote teachers right from the beginning. There is an expectation to focus on the social, emotional needs of our students um, through things like morning meetings and individual check-ins. Um, there will be in time built in for our teachers to give meaningful feedback to students. Because that's another piece of feedback we received loud and clear from parents, that they really were looking for some meaningful feedback given to students. Um, so we are building time into that as well. Um, I do think that the remote learning schedule will look different. You know, a number of parents have emailed me and they have asked me about the hours and the schedule and the timing. And just like in-person teaching looks different between first grade and fourth grade and sixth grade, so too will remote learning look different between first grade and fourth grade and sixth grade. Because what we expect from a first grader is different than what we expect from a sixth grader. So it just developmentally makes sense. Um, and I, I will say that it might be dependent also upon units of study, the amount of live teaching versus video-reported teaching. Um, so if you're introducing a lesson, a brand-new concept in math, that might be a little more challenging. The teacher might decide to do a live lesson one day and then a recorded lesson next day and then just independent work the third day. So it might also vary depending upon what the teacher is teaching. So I, I know that that causes some frustration and some confusion, but the ebb and flow of how teachers teach always is, is different depending upon the students in front of them, the lesson they're teaching, the content that they're teaching, um, and the concepts that they're teaching. Um, so that, that's why that answer sounds the way that it does. Um, David, I think you have another question, a part two about moving?
Yeah, no, I mean, I think, I think it's all blended in there. And, and honestly, it's helpful to just hear you think through it out loud and, and to understand the complexity because of course it looks different for kindergarten than it does from sixth grade. Like, like, of course it does and there's going to be flexi, I, I, I get that, I, I get that, believe me. Um, I, I, I think it's just wanting to get a sense of, of, you know, how are we approaching this structurally? And, and, because I, I think to me, honestly, like, a big part of this has been semantics of, of the plan, with a capital P of full-time, in-person, hybrid, that, that to me is a plan with a lowercase p of like, operationally, what are we actually doing to ensure success for our students? Um, and, and how are we thinking about that process? So I guess one little piece with the remote option is, I, I think in previous meetings, it's been said that even somebody who begins in the remote option will be assigned to a classroom with a teacher? Is, that, that's correct. So, so they would have that person and they have a second person? So how?
Good question.
Are they engaging with the in-person teacher or are they primarily engaging with the remote? But that would be their home if they return?
Right, exactly. I mean, we're, we, we kind of understand the fluidity of people's lives. Um, again, we're receiving a lot of communication from parents. I, I just got one from today and a parent gave me a date. She said, "My son is going to be out until this date and then I would like him to come in." And she has her own personal reasons for that happening. So we kind of, we are trying to recognize that everyone's life and story and journey is different in this pandemic. And so we're assigned, we are attempting to assign every child who is choosing remote right now, a remote teacher, but also make sure that they are placed into a homeroom class. Now, they won't have interaction with the in-person teacher necessarily. Um, I'm going to say probably at all unless they decide to come back to school in person. In which case, um, we will talk through what that will look like, um, including getting the remote teacher to connect with the in-person teacher. Um, perhaps the in-person teacher will have an opportunity to set up just a virtual meeting with the child before they come to school. Um, we will transition that child back into school, um, should they choose to do that. So we're, we're, we are trying to make sure that every child has a home in the building should they choose to come to the building, but also a remote teacher if they are choosing to go remote to start the year.
That's really helpful to hear, to, to understand that schema because I had not been able to parse out the two teachers and how that was working. So, um, thank you, that's, that's really helpful. Um, I, I, I guess I, I have some, some more granular level questions also. I know there's been a lot of conversation about safety protocols. And, and I know that some of the emails have included some things about safety protocols, but, but I really am concerned and, and want to understand, um, families are going to have the opportunity to make the choice that they think is right for them and our teachers have less flexibility to make that. So I'm, I'm really, I, I want to be sure that we're doing everything we can to ensure that they're going to be safe. Um, so I, I'm curious, do we understand how PPE is going to work for the teachers? Um, and, and what that's going to look like and, and what's being provided or what they're being expected to bring? Um, what are the protocols for screening, um, kids? And, and are we, are we relying on families to be providing data? Um, recognizing that a family may not be reliable by choice or not by choice, or they don't know, or a kid might be sick and, you know, for whatever reason. Um, are we doing temperature checks? Like, like, what, what are the protocols that are going to be in place? Do these already exist in someplace where all of the families could go and look on a BRS website to see the actual details that, that contain this?
Um, so I'm going to ask Stacy to begin this explanation. Um, and then if there are pieces that either Lisa or Doreen need to add into that, um, I would ask them to continue, but Stacy, if you would mind sharing some information?
Sure, I don't mind at all. Can you hear me? Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Yes, Stacy.
So we've developed, um, protocols, so, uh, the CDC does not recommend, uh, temperature screenings. Um, some of that is the bottlenecking and trying to get the children in and, and taking a temperature when they don't really have temperatures that much. And when they do have a temperature, they've already been, um, probably spreading COVID. So what we did develop is a symptom checker that's going to go home. We have packets that are going to be going home to parents. And it will also be up on our, our website. And it goes through, um, symptoms of students. And we are going to have water with it, asking parents, um, to check their students every day before coming in. And we are going to rely on parents to do that. And it is going to say something like, "We are all a community and as a community, we need to take care of ourselves and they need to help us with this." Um, teachers are going to see this and teachers are going to know that we're going to have a very low threshold for sending students home, um, with any of these symptoms. And, um, like I said, they're, they are listed. It's also for staff. And so we have one for staff too. And, you know, staff aren't to come in if they're exhibiting these symptoms also, and they will stay home. Um, we have protocols, other ones that, you know, like for us triaging, how to triage the students. Um, so we will let the staff know about that, um, how we're going to do medication, how we're going to do other things. Um, and then a, a triage protocol for situations of if somebody has, um, come in contact with somebody with COVID, if somebody has some, you know, family that's been diagnosed with COVID, if someone's suspected of COVID, if somebody is positive for COVID. So there's a whole metric of that that will be going home to parents. This will be going out to every staff member also. Um, I also have a letter that's developed, waiting to be approved by, um, the administrators. And it goes through everything about masks, why do we wear a mask? Why are masks so important? What kind of masks are good? What masks we're not allowing into, um, the building? Um, uh, again, it also explains this diagram about, um, the individual with COVID. They have symptoms, but they were not, um, they may have symptoms, but they were not with another person. How long did they have to stay home? Do they quarantine or isolate? It's written out, not only on a, a diagram like I have, but it's kind of just written out in language, which is easier for parents to understand. It's written in this, um, frequently asked questions to go home with parents and, and also for staff. Um, that's coming home. Also included in the packet, some CDC, um, easily to understand guidelines, um, too. Um, so I have that. As far as PPE, we have packets of PPE by, um, what it's, whether it's a teacher in the classroom, if it's a teacher in the special ed classroom or a TA in a, um, special ed education classroom and what they may need. So that, you know, there's different ones, there are different areas and what kind of students that they're taking care of. And so we will be working with them and showing them how to correctly put on, take off, what they're going to need. So all teachers will have access to masks, face shields. We have gowns in particular areas that they may, may need them, gloves. Um, aprons, if they need aprons, we have, um, sleeves. If they may just own sleeves for certain things that they are doing. We have a lot of PPE, seventy thousand dollars worth of things.
Can I just make one comment, Stacy? Thanks for, for going through all that. I, I just want to add one, uh, Jack? Call it a gloss on, and I do realize that this, can anyone hear me? All okay? Okay, um, yeah, I, I do realize the directives that have come out from the CDC, um, and that they do include exactly what you said. And so we do need to sort of understand the CDC and its current position. Um, and the pressure that are on the, pressures that are on the CDC to make such statements. Um, I think the most important thing from my standpoint is the health of the people in the community and making all of our decisions. And one aspect that is sort of strange to hear is the claim that, um, temperature checks would not be useful. Um, they would in fact be problems as a gate, um, measure. Uh, that is, if you had to bottleneck everyone up when they're coming into school to do a temperature check, I can, that's a complete, you know, nightmare situation that would be problematic. Uh, but, uh, I mean, the, the fact that they may be already transmitting is all the more reason to do a trend, uh, temperature check, not a reason to ignore the possibility of doing temperature checks. And the one thing that should be clear is that, um, you don't have to do a temperature check at the gate in order for it to be useful. So if there are any opportunities to include temperature checks as science lessons or any kind of thing that you want to do, uh, they are useful. Um, they're not going to solve the problem, but they're a very useful thing to do and.
Oh, I missed both. I meant, I meant we would not do it at the doors coming in.
Yeah, there's no reason to do it at the door, that wouldn't work.
No, we, we will. We will be doing temperature checks, but not, not, not as a screening at the door.
Right, so I guess what I want to emphasize to this audience is, uh, you know, the, as parents, you should do temperature checks before kids go to school.
And that's on the plan.
If they find out at the school that your kid has a temperature. The point of temperature, the temperature rising point is a point of extremely high transmission of COVID-nineteen. And so it is up to the school to try to monitor whether or not, you know, kids are coming down with any kind of symptoms and do temperature checks. And if they do, it is a very useful metric for whether or not they need to go home. So, um, so I just want to make that extremely clear so no one comes with a wrong impression. And, and also just as a, as a, as a rule in the school, anytime you can come up with ways to do it without disrupting, uh, the, the, uh, the education that you have to provide, uh, temperature checks are definitely a useful thing to do.
Thank you for clarifying that because the first thing on their, their symptom checker at home is to take a temperature. And so if it is a hundred point zero, they are not to come into school. So it's a very low threshold and it, they will be sent home from us if they come in and they're symptomatic with any of these, a lot of symptoms and it's a hundred point zero. So the temperature is a very low threshold. Um, and CDC's is a hundred point four for a fever. And if they're symptomatic and it's a hundred point zero and not feeling well, we will be sending them home. So yes, we are going to be taking tests and I, I'm sorry, I misstated it like that. But I was talking about some schools and they will see, you know, on TV that they're doing it. And the summer, they were saying we should take them, you know, at the doors before they even walk into the building. even walk into the building. And that's not being recommended anymore.
Yeah, well, I just, I'll just comment that that is actually the least effective time to do it because presumably they didn't have a fever when they left the house. And so all is double checking what the parents did, whereas halfway through the day, they might be coming up with a fever and it might be worthwhile checking. So just, uh, just clarify that. And I just want to thank you, Stacy, because I know there's a tremendous amount of effort and pressure that you're under in taking care of the school in a situation of a global pandemic. So thank you for all of you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Stacy. Thank you, Jeff, for, for chiming in. I, I had one other question. Again, it's something that I know you all have been working on. And so I'm just really curious to understand more. A while back, at one of the board meetings, there was discussion that, that when students returns, that the curriculum was going to be really radically adjusted at the start of the year with a different focus primarily on social and emotional learning. This is what I'm remembering that I thought I heard said. And I'm just hoping you can clarify, how, how are you guys thinking about the curriculum at the onset of the year? And, and, and what should families be expecting that to look like in the first block? And, and I guess I'll tag on to that. I am staring at you because you can't see with the stupid camera. You can, you can wait for Christine to jump in if you'd rather, but I know you know the answer to this. And, and I guess part of that question also relates to, um, I see Sheri Storyguard's face in the bottom of my screen. And, and there's been discussion around ways that we might creatively use space to mitigate risk, including outdoor activities. And to the extent that we're thinking about social emotional learning, to what extent has the outdoor committee been able to contribute things that have been able to be usefully incorporated?
Christine, do you want me to take that one? I never want to step on.
Yes, Lisa.
I was, I didn't want to step on your toes. So as I mentioned earlier, that the start of our six days of PD, we will give teachers the time, first of all, to share out the work that was done over the summer and to look very closely at their pacing guides for the year, um, which was also part of their summer work. And also to look very closely at the beginning of the school and do some planning for that. I will say that loud and clear, what we have heard from teachers, from parents, from everybody, staff members, is the need to really focus on the social emotional needs of our kids. They have been out of school, you all know this, since I'm stating the obvious here. And it has been an unusual summer and they are coming back to a school that we are so excited to have them. And it's going to be so joyful to have our hallways filled with the sound of children again and to see them all back in their classrooms again, but it is going to look different. Desks are spread out, we are wearing masks, there's different signs around the building. So there's going to be some time for all of us to get used to that and to all of us to get used to sort of what the new normal looks like at Beecher. So we really want to make sure that we're taking care of them and we're taking care of their little souls and hearts and making sure that they're okay and adjusting to this and doing okay. So we are going to spend a lot of time focusing on social emotional. Academically, um, I will say that our teachers, again, this summer spent a lot of time thinking through what the beginning of the year can look like and adjusting to a new way of teaching and adjusting the curriculum and the pacing. We will begin with a lot of informal assessments. Teachers gather a lot of information just by doing a reading interview with a child. And I know for those of us that love data and numbers, it's, it's not exactly a hard and fast data and number, but it is something that a teacher can get a lot of information about a child just by pulling up next to them and listening to them read for a few minutes and asking them about their books. And so teachers are going to start with that kind of sort of informal assessments, I imagine. And they're going to start with a lot of those kind of informal assessments, exit tickets, journal entries, checking in on the work that they're doing, having conferences and conversations with them. And after that, as we're sort of driving into the school year further, then our teachers will of course shift to more, more, more traditional assessments, I guess, and more, you know, end of unit assessments. We will be administering our STAR tests as we do every single year. We will be doing that at the beginning of the year. So that will be a data point for us. And we will use all of that information to sort of continue to monitor and adjust. Our data team will get up and running again. We'll start looking at data as it's rolling in. We will get that up and running again. And we will just sort of continue to monitor and adjust our curriculum and instruction based on the needs of our kids that we're encountering. Outdoor classroom, there was a question about that too. Is that?
All right, it was. You didn't get there. You, you were, you were largely answering the question.
The outdoor classroom spaces, we actually, um, I have to, I have to give huge credit to the outdoor classroom committee and especially Vito Esparo, who went on many, many walks around the grounds. He was a pro at it by the time I joined him on like the third or fourth one. And, um, we have a number of spaces that are marked. And he actually, I, I showed him an example of a map and his spatially challenged principal said, this looks really great. Can you do it for me? Because I can't, I don't, this does not work for my brain. But he actually put together a map for all of our teachers, um, designating, designating all of the outdoor areas that are usable, um, that the outdoor committee and all the various tours that we took. So some of them are usable, um, right next to our building and some of them are a little further away. And he, and we're going to be able to let teachers know, here is an area that is shady most of the day. Here's an area that's not shady at all. Here's an area where you might need a towel or a yoga mat. Here's an area that's great for mask breaks, but maybe not so great for learning. So we are going to designate spots on a map for our teachers. They will receive that at the start of the school year. And we are really allowing, because a lot of the feedback we heard from our teachers was that they really would prefer flexibility on the outdoor places. Some teachers indicated they would use it more. Some teachers indicated that that would not be a space that they would access as often to do their instruction. So we are trying to build it in as a option for all of our teachers to access with some flexibility. We are also very carefully building our schedules and they will be shared with everybody in terms of recess because we are going to change the way that recess is happening. We are not going to be sending out an entire grade level anymore. We are going to be sending out classes, um, two to three at a time, and they are going to be standing in assigned areas. So one class, for example, might be on the field, one class might be on the blacktop and one class might be on the tennis course. I'm not remembering the exact spot right now, but we're going to make sure that our schedule is very clear and people know when other classes will be outside so that if they are planning to go outside for instruction, they will know if there is a class out and where that class is for recess. I think that's everything.
I think I've taken up more than my share of time, but could I just say, Lisa, Christine, thank you. This is the level of detail that, that I've really wanted to hear to be able to make an informed decision for myself. I think it's what other people have wanted as well. So I really appreciate you taking the time. It's very clear you all have been working hard. No question. It's really helpful to hear and understand the thought process and how the plan has evolved from there. So thank you.
Thank you, David. And, um, we're going to move on to Jeff Hughes.
Yes, thank you. A lot of my questions have already been answered. Essentially, this reopening plan was created, vetted and blessed by the reopening committee, our previous superintendent, our interim superintendent and all the administrators. Rough calculations, that's about 300 years worth of education experience behind this plan. So without a doubt, it has my utmost confidence in it. Also, the teachers at Beecher Road are the sole reason why I moved into this town. So they have my confidence as well. So I think the combination of the plan and the teachers at Beecher Road, I think we're going to be in for a successful reopening with both in-person classes and also the remote option. So I'm looking forward to a solid start. I think we're ready and, uh, let's get to it.
Thank you, Jeff. So we're at the end. That's me. My fellow board members have asked incredibly insightful and helpful questions. I had a question about, uh, questions as well. Some of them have been answered. I just want to piggyback on to the hiring question and, um, so that it sounds like we are ready to, um, take off with that. And hopefully those teachers will be able to be on board with this on month, on Friday. Is that correct? Christine and Lisa?
Can, can I make a comment? As the finance chair, um, I have to say, Al and Christine, you're making me sweat bullets here with these eight additional hires. And so, um, I would like to go on record as saying that the financial liabilities with respect to the eight additional teacher hires have not been completely worked out and that the town has not agreed to cover these expenses. So I just want to make sure that that's on record from me because I learned about these on Thursday night. That was the first I had heard about it. So I'm, I'm just very nervous given my, given my position.
I, I have a question with what Joyce just said, and maybe Al can answer it for me. I'm also a member of the finance board. Does the town typically approve excess spending in our budget month to month?
It does not, Dan. The, the working relationship is the board manages its budget until such time as it identifies an issue that is not manageable within the original appropriation and those requests begin to formalize and go forward to the town. I, I don't mean to diminish or dismiss any member's concerns. As the finance person for this district, uh, in my 11th year, I can tell you that this is a year like no other, but it is not uncommon to have variables during the year. We've had variables with special education. We've had variables with labor contracts. So it, it, it would be wonderful. I think any one of my counterparts would love a year that doesn't have a variable that's unknown early on or during the year. But I want to assure all the members that, as I said earlier, discussions, discussions are ongoing and, and I've had the benefit of working in other districts and seeing other models. And, and I can tell you that Woodbridge is unique in the ongoing dialogue between the district and the town. And that has a lot of value add. Is it going to open up a checkbook and commit that however this year plays out, whether you have eight temporary hires or 18 temporary hires? Is there an assurance that the checkbook is there to cover you? Absolutely not. The town's funding source is a finite source, but the, the, the business practice and what we've done in the past and what we will continue to do is continuous monitoring and looking for potential opportunities to offset the unknown expenses that will cause us to go in the red. That, that is the best assurance that I can offer the members and those in attendance at this meeting tonight, the assurance that we will continue to monitor and, and we will try to avoid the blindsiding surprises. But we must all understand going in that these are pandemic conditions and, and there hasn't been a script or a recipe written yet. Sorry for the long answer, Dan.
And if I could just respond to Joyce, um, I understand the feeling that you have in your stomach. I have to share with you that as a superintendent with previous experience, I am not one who has overextended a budget in my career. If there are areas where we are overextending, then I am going to work very closely with Al and with the rest of the administrators to determine where we can make adjustments and where we might be able to offset some of those other costs. And I assure you that we will keep you informed every step of the way. And we will begin those conversations with the town, as I said, right after school is open, we will begin setting up those meetings. So I appreciate how you're feeling, but I also appreciate the support that I've heard from the board this evening.
And, and I'm sorry, folks, if I may just add, um, we're still in the process of closing out final adjustments for FY '20, but just a reminder that we did end the year with a surplus that went back to the town. And the surplus that is going back to the town would have actually been higher. But again, through that collaborative needs assessment and dialogue, the town agreed to allow us to use part of what would have been a higher surplus in order to mitigate some of the COVID related expenses. So that, that's a real time, current day example of hopefully a trend that will continue.
Thank you, Al. Thank you, Christine. I just wanted to make a couple of comments. I thought I had started talking, but apparently I hadn't unmuted myself. So, um, I, I wanted to say that I think that our board members tonight asked very insightful questions that were helpful to get the answers to. I really appreciate Christine and Al and Lisa and Stacy for the information that you've shared with us to help us to understand better. I have just, um, one question about, a clarification question, and I think it's for you, Lisa, about PD. I'm assuming, but I don't want to assume anything, that all of the staff will be included in the PD, including people who are working remotely.
Yes, and actually the yes is a short answer. The slightly longer answer is that all staff, TA, teacher, teachers, um, all are included. And the remote teachers will be included remotely. Our professional development, um, will be held in a variety of formats. It will be held virtually when it is meant to be a whole large faculty meeting. It will be held in person and socially distanced, sometimes outside actually, if it is something that we feel needs to be completed in person. So there will be sort of a blend of in-person and remote PD, even though all staff will be on site in the building except for our remote teachers. Our remote teachers will be joining us for that PD remotely. And they will also have some separate PD designed just for them, including extra support from our technology department should they wish it. Some time with just Ms. Merrill, Ms. Mammon and myself to talk through some of their particular unique needs and challenges that they're going to go into, some planning time together, some planning time with their grade level teams. So yes, all remote teachers, all teacher assistants, all teachers will be included in our professional development.
Thank you. I think that helped in terms of clarifying for anyone who might have a question about that. So I appreciate that. We've gotten through everyone on the board. If there's an additional question, Joyce?
Yes, I'd like to circle back to one of my questions about the remote learning classrooms and the number of students. I guess I'm a little bit taken aback by the high number of students. And so when I think back to one of the principles that I think we can all agree to, which is that we as a board tried to achieve, as a school, as a community, that we try to achieve the highest quality of education, given all the constraints that we are under. This would be whether the students are at school or whether they are learning at home. And I, I am just concerned that with such a high level, high number of remote learning students or teacher, I'm not sure whether we can have the quality, achieve the quality that we would want. So I, I, I am hoping that there are ways to address the concerns that I would imagine any of the parents of remote students feel.
Well, I mean, just.
Oh, sorry.
No, you, go ahead, go ahead, Superintendent.
Sorry. So, so Joyce, that's certainly, you know, this is a new model for us, as you're aware, and we want it to be as strong as possible as well. So I think the very first step of that will be when Lisa and Doreen and Cheryl have the opportunity to sit and meet with those teachers on Friday in the coming days. And it's really important for the teachers to be part of that planning and what that's going to look like and share with us the ways that we can provide them the support and help that they will need in order to be successful. We are certainly not looking for the remote learning to be at any lesser of a quality and we want it to be just as successful as the in-person. So we will monitor that. And I don't know if Lisa has anything to add or, or Doreen or Cheryl. I, I can understand what you're saying, but know that we are also very aware of those numbers and that we are going to really work with the numbers and that we are going to really work with the teachers to help them to be successful so our students can be successful.
Dan, did you have a comment?
I think Superintendent commented back and I, I'll defer to her.
Thank you. All right then. I believe we might be ready to move on to item five. Personnel, certified leave of absence requests. And Nicole Chick, Amy Meacham, and Nicole Rizzo. Superintendent Siriak, do you have a statement to make?
I would stand by what I had shared with the Board of Education on Monday evening. However, I do know that the board is aware that all three of the teachers had sent a clarification to the Board of Education in regard to their request for the unpaid leave of absence for a year. And while I feel that it is going to be detrimental to the school district for those leaves to be granted based on the reasons that I had stated on Monday, I also understand the personal nature for each of these individuals. And I would rather that the Board of Education grant them a leave of absence so that they have the opportunity to return to the Beecher Road School community in the following school year, should they want that opportunity available to them, and not risk losing them in a different manner.
Thank you, Christine. Do I have a motion from the board?
So I just want to clarify, are we going to motion each individual person or all together?
I would believe whatever your motion would be, Dan, then we would vote.
I motion that we accept the leave of absence from all three teachers, Ms. Meacham, I forgot, Ms. Chick and Ms. Rizzo, I couldn't remember, for one year, as clarified in their email to the Board of Ed. That's it.
And do I have a second? Thank you, Dan. And do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, so I just want to clarify that's for the 2020, 2021 school year.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
So we're going to vote. Mike Strampler?
Yes.
Lore?
Yes.
Megan?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joyce?
With great sadness, yes.
Jeff Townsend?
Yes.
David?
Also with tremendous sadness that we ended up in this point. And I don't know how we got to this point, but this is a great loss for our community. And I vote this way only because I know this is what the teachers want. And I hope we will be able to welcome them back in a year. So I vote yes to support what our teachers have said they want.
Jeff Hughes?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. So it's a unanimous vote to grant one-year leave of absence to Nicole, Amy Meacham, and Nicole Rizzo for the 2020, 2021 school year. Okay. To item seven, adjournment. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So motioned.
Dan Goodall, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Well, you know what? Four people are out if you're opposed to adjourn it. Wonderful. I thank everyone for tonight. I want to especially thank the administration for presenting and for the hard work of all people in developing the plan. I hope you all have a good evening and good luck for the start of school on Friday.
Thank you. Good night, everyone.